Hello, I'm Councilor Wardine Alexander. I represent District 7. I'm joined here by fellow members of the council. I'm very excited to have each of you here and join us this evening as we hear from you regarding the district maps that we have drafted to be used in the next general election and any special elections. I first like to start by allowing each counselor to introduce themselves and we'll start down on the end with Counselor Clark. And if you just say your name and your district. Just push the button up. It's a little slide.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carol Clark and I represent District 8, which is where you're sitting right now.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is JT Moore. I represent District 4 and glad to be here tonight.
Hello, my name is Valerie Abbott and I am proud to represent District 3 as I have been proud to represent District 3 for the last 20 years.
No, you can keep it. I got one.
He's gone.
Hi, good evening. My name is Darrell O'Quinn. I represent District 5.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal Smitherman. I am President Pro Tem of the City Council and I represent District 6, the best district of all.
Now, I don't know if we're gonna start the evening like that because that ain't right. But I'm Hunter Williams. I represent District 2, the east side of Birmingham, and I appreciate the west side in having us here.
Good evening. I am Latonya Tate and we represent the west side, District 9. District 9.
Thank you very much. And I know that Counselor Woods of District 1, I believe he's in the building, he just has not joined us at the table. Again, we are very glad to see each of you here with us this evening. I do want to make note that we do have some other elected officials in the room and I believe I see some of the representatives of our Board of Education. And so if you'll each will just stand so that we can recognize you. All right, thank you. Judge. And here's my counterpart, D. 7. Thank you again. We will be together for the next hour or so to, again, this is a listening tour. You are the ones on stage. Even though we're sitting on the stage, you are on the stage this evening by wanting to hear your concerns. I don't wanna say concerns, I wanna start it out negatively, but just hear information that you may desire about the district map that we have drafted for you. We undertook this process several months ago. I would like to thank the members of the redistricting committee and that is Counselor Pro Tem Smitherman and Counselor Williams. And so we have worked as a committee. We received the results of the 2020 census back in August. And if you all know, we were all, each of us, pretty busy doing something in August and that was so that we could be able to be here in front of you today. So once we received those results, we hired a consultant that took the information based on the 2020 census. And that information has been used to create district maps for each of the nine districts. Again, this is a draft that we'll be discussing this evening. Each counselor had an opportunity to work with the consultants and given the data that was shown as a result of the census, then we used that. That data was used to create the maps. Then that was discussed in two different sessions with each counselor. We also had an opportunity for counselors to talk with each other, especially in those cases. For example, Counselor Smitherman and I, we share, currently, we share about two or three districts and there are other counselors that share those districts. Once that information was given to us, we also established guidelines and we'll be talking about that this afternoon. And this is required by law. That your city council goes and redistricts or reassigns these maps. And so this authority is given to us by federal law and by our own ordinances. So we had four topics or four areas that we really wanted to follow as a matter of preparing these maps. And one of that was to provide equal population. Of course, we wanted to be in compliance with the law. We want contiguity as well as compactness. And by that I mean how our districts are maintained or how they're mapped. So in talking about our consultant, we did hire a very capable, we feel, a very capable and knowledgeable consultant and that is Krim Card Consultants and that's Dr. Kareem Creighton over to my right. And so we want to thank Dr. Creighton and his team for the work that they have done to draw up this draft map. So again, once Dr. Creighton will give you an overview of the process and then we'll begin with the getting your feedback. We have two mics on either side. I would like to ask that you limit your conversation or the information you want to share with us to three minutes and then we will be taking that information down and we, again, we want to listen to you. We'll use this information as well as feedback we've obtained from our council to come up with the final version of the map, okay? So Dr. Creighton, it's you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Dr. Creighton, I'm so sorry. We do have an agenda and so I've got a little ahead of myself. So I would like to ask Counselor Moore, would you give us an indication?
Let me see. Will everybody please bow your heads? Father God, we come together today or this evening with great intentions, Father God, to have clarity and understanding. I thank you, Father God, that we are able to just come together and better understand exactly where these lines are drawn and how to really be good neighbors and, you know, make the best of it, Father God. I thank you, Father God, that, you know, with these new district lines that are drawn, that we still are able to push forward the initiatives of each of the neighborhoods to better improve our city and to better improve the quality of life of each and every person that is here in attendance on this evening. And so, Father God, we just thank you for being here with us because where you are, there is freedom. And I thank you that everybody speaks freely, shares their opinions, and we all work together to make the city a better place to live. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. We do appreciate that and the best way to start out any meeting, so thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Clerk, would you call the role for us, please?
Counselor Member Abbott. Counselor Member Clark. Counselor Member Moore. Counselor, good evening. Counselor Member O'Quinn. Counselor Pro Tem Smitherman. I'm sorry, let me call you next to last. My apologies. Counselor Member Tate. Counselor Member Williams. Counselor Member Woods. Counselor President Pro Tem Smitherman. And Counselor President Alexander.
President, thank you very much. Again, I've already summarized for you why we are here. This is a public hearing on the reapportionment of council district boundaries. And we do have an ordinance that, and we need to adopt this tonight, counselors. We've already adopted, or just read that for future.
Defer to another day.
Okay. And so, do you want to read that and we'll just defer?
We'll get a motion and then we'll discuss it. An ordinance to reapportion the council district boundaries for the city of Birmingham, Alabama, in the hearing of all its parties. And this is the first reading of the item and of course, it's an item of permanent operation. That's why I was saying two readings. So we'll get a motion on the item itself. So that was Counselor Williams and I heard Pro Tem Smitherman. All right, thank you. Item is before you.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselors, at this time, I would like to allow Mr. Creighton to start us off with a summary and overview of how we reached that point and the information that we will be seeking from each of you this evening. Dr. Creighton, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President. I hope everyone can hear me okay. My name is Kareem Creighton. I, as the President mentioned, am the founder and manager of Krim Card Consulting Services. So that you know a little bit about me, just to situate the work that I'm about to describe to you. I've practiced, written, and taught areas of redistricting and election law for over 20 years. More important, I'm actually from the great state of Alabama and last lived in Alabama in the city of Birmingham. So this is a great personal privilege for me to be able to contribute in this way. I appreciate the patience of the council in working with us to kind of put this together. The President mentioned the general flow of the process. I want to say just a couple of things about the process and speak a bit about the principles, the guidelines that we use and then speak to the map that you're seeing here. Again, everything that the council president said is, of course, absolutely correct. I wanted to just emphasize that some people asked about this map. I believe as part of this process, the map was presented after the council agreed to move forward as the, having this as the draft. It was placed on the council's website. It was posted outside the council chambers and made available and regional libraries in the, in the city. So it's a part of the commitment that the council has to be transparent about this process so that you all can provide as much feedback about the draft as possible. The other thing to say about the principle, moving from the process to the principle, the guidelines, as the council president mentioned, are also on the website and they are recommended as the prototypical set of principles that you want to have, the regular things that you want to think about in your redistricting. The main piece of it, the law requires that each one of the districts that govern a city or any jurisdiction has to be roughly equal in population to every other district. This is the one person, one vote principle and the basic concept is you want to make sure that the power that you have in your district is roughly equivalent to the power that anybody else in any other district has. So we want to try to balance out overpopulated districts with underpopulated districts. So one of the main features of redistricting is recognizing that shifts of the population have to be matched with shifts in district lines. The only other thing I wanted to mention, and this has been a peculiar decade of redistricting in part because the census, as many of you know, occurred a little bit later than it typically does and that's due to the worldwide pandemic. Part of that resulted in having an election in 2021 that was under the 2010 district. So we're having this redistricting, obviously, after having an election in the city of Birmingham. Now, that's not, this isn't the only jurisdiction that had to do that, but that's where we are right now. But part of what the council agreed to in its guidelines, and you'll see it if you look online, it's the last consideration and that is maintaining as much as possible the respect for the constituents who elected the members in a given constituency. So to put it in plain terms, we tried as best we could to make sure that people who started off in District A, let's just take that hypothetical example, maintained that representation where we could. Now, because we had to shift population, that wasn't always possible, but we tried as much as we could so that that did not go to a significant degree. And as you'll see when I show you a bit more about the maps, the percentage of people who had to move from one district to the other was actually quite low. I want to talk a bit now about having discussed the considerations in the guidelines. I want to talk a bit about the map itself. And as the President said, this was an iteration after having individual conversations with each of the council members, more than one, where we talked about the existing map and I'll just say, the world that we inherited at the end of the 2020 census was a realization that the city of Birmingham, generally speaking, has a lot of population growth in the east and a little bit of population loss relative to the east in the west. So there were overpopulated districts in districts like 1 and 2, significantly underpopulated districts like those in 9 and 8. Those aren't the only ones, but that's the general thrust of what had to be resolved by dealing with one person, one vote population shifts. Okay. So what you're seeing here is a map that shows you the background colors. You see the greens and the browns and such. That is the draft proposal that's a result of all the different conferences with the council members. The black lines, you'll see that in the heavily shaded, I don't know if you can catch my mouse here, but the black lines represent the existing 2010 map. So I thought it would be useful to see what changed. So when you see a color going over a black line, that means that the jurisdiction, the district, goes a little bit over where it used to be. Or if it's a line that is sort of below where the colored area is, that means the district moved away from its old boundaries. So we'll talk a little bit about it, but I just want you to get a sense as you go district by district, and that's what I'm about to do, about how to read the map as a whole, okay? So let's start with District 1 and I'll try to do this so we don't spend too much time listening to me. We are obviously here to listen to you, but I thought we'd talk a little bit about in general form what changed with this proposed map. So District 1, as you know, is in the northeast part of the city. It was one of the districts that was overpopulated. And what we had to do as a matter of the guidelines was to bring the population closer to equal. And so District 1, the way we did that was really harmonizing some of the district lines that existed between District 1, which is in orange, and District 4, which is in green to the bottom left. And one of the ways we did that, we haven't talked explicitly about this guideline, was recognizing communities of interest. Generally, in redistricting, when you move people around, you want to move people in a way that allows groups of people that normally live near each other, are in the same church, you know, congregation, that they're moving in groups to areas where they can work together politically. In Birmingham, as you all know, there are 99 recognized neighborhoods. So the guidelines recognize neighborhoods as one way of recognizing a community of interest. And what you see in the old map, generally speaking, is a lot of divided neighborhoods. So where we could, we tried to consolidate and bring those neighborhoods together so that when they moved, if they had to move from one district to another, they were moved as a whole. And to speak about that, since we're on the topic of neighborhoods, it was always recognized that communities of interest may be a neighborhood in one part of the city, it may not be in another part of the city. And part of what we wanted to do was leave open the possibility that things will change depending on where you are. But in this instance, what we tried to do was to, where we could, keep neighborhoods together. And one of the particular policies that emerged was to assure that when a council member or a Board of Education member was in a neighborhood, we tried to keep that council member or Board of Election member in that district, but also to try to consolidate for the council members their home neighborhood. And again, part of that was just to make sure that, one, we treated everybody equally with one exception, we did that for, we were able to do that for every council member. I'll talk about places where we had to accept that rule. But also, we wanted to make sure that the public knew where their district was located. So we thought, and we got a lot of feedback from the counselors, that in certain places, it was very difficult for people to know which side of the street was in District 1 or District 2, just for an example. And so where we tried to, where we could do it and where the counselors agreed to it, there was an effort to bring areas that were involved with divided neighborhoods brought together as a whole neighborhood to put in a district. A lot of those examples exist, again, right around this area between Districts 1 and District 4, but there are going to be some other examples. Exception with divided neighborhoods, at least with District 1, was Roebuck. And most of you all know Roebuck is one of the two largest population-wise neighborhoods in the city. So therefore, it was next to impossible to move any one of those big neighborhoods in whole into one district. We also had the concern, I didn't put it up here, but this area here, right around here, was an area where the Board of Education member for District 2 is located. So in order to keep District 2's board member in District 2, we had to do a little bit of moving around with the consent of the counselors involved to make sure that this area maintained its Board of Education member, but also tried as much as we could to take in areas that were viewed as common within District 1 together within the district. But Roebuck was already divided under the old plan. It continues to be divided under the new plan is the main point, the draft plan, which is the point I wanted to make about that. I'd like to move on to District 2. Like District 1, District 2, which is, as we now know, the council district in the southeast part of the city, that is also an overpopulated district. So one of the things that you had to do was to make sure that some of that population shifted elsewhere. And what you will generally see is most of those districts that were in the east, the west part of the city, kind of floated a little bit eastward to capture more population. District 2 was the one district where we could not keep the entire neighborhood that the counselor lived in. And so you'll see here, I'm looking here, let me try. Here in Crestline Gardens or Crestwood area, this was one of those places where the challenge of the building block that we have to work with, with redistricting census blocks, prevented us from actually cleanly dividing a neighborhood. But this was an area, for example, where the census blocks that were reported, where we get the population information from the census, bridged two different neighborhoods. One census block sat between, say, Forest Park or Redmont Park and Crestline. So we couldn't move the census block one way or the other without taking a little bit of the other neighborhood. But because of the population movement, we kept the counselor in District 2, but what we couldn't do was to keep the neighborhood as a whole in one district. But nonetheless, the neighborhoods elsewhere were consolidated throughout the district. And as you can tell, the city is shaped in a little peculiar way, but that's the boundary of the city. So we tried to, as much as we could, maintain compactness, recognizing the borders of the city. District 2, as it was established, is now, under this draft, just 1% off of the perfect equal, perfectly equal percentage of population. So I think that takes us to District 3. So we now get to an area where District 3 was not necessarily overpopulated heavily or underpopulated, but the difference for District 3 was it sits right in the middle of the city. Districts 3, District 5, and in some ways, 6 and 4 were right in the middle of the areas of heavy growth and overpopulation and the areas to the west that had a need to gain more population. And the only way that you can do that switching in many of these places is to switch and to make changes to those districts in the middle. And I'll talk more about the other districts, but for now, let's talk about District 3. District 3 was one of those where the counselor in Glen Iris had a divided neighborhood. This area to the west of I-65, you can tell that black line was where the old line was for the district. And one of the policy considerations that we talked about earlier was to consolidate neighborhoods. So this was an area where we could bring all of Glen Iris together in District 3. And in addition to that, take in the consolidated Forest Park area as well as part of the East Avondale area. So the intention behind this was to make sure that we could, everywhere that we could, bring together, in fact, let me change this, I'm showing you a different mapping configuration. But what we tried to do where we could was to bring all of these areas together and consolidate neighborhoods so that people who were in a single neighborhood knew that they were all in one district. And so what we did with Forest Park was to bring all of Forest Park into District 3. Okay, so that takes us now to District 4. District 4, we're going to move north, we have to hopscotch a little bit. District 4 is in the center of the city but in the north. And District 4, unlike the others, is the first underpopulated district. It's significantly below the ideal population so that we'd have to increase the number of people to comply with the law. In order to do that, we made some changes, again, in the east to take in parts of District 1. Remember, District 1 was overpopulated in the northeast and in an area near, this is Northeast Lake. So most of the gains in population in the east were in areas that were overpopulated. We also did, in order to consolidate neighborhoods again, was to clean up a lot of the lines in the west, which had a lot of jagged edges, which was very difficult, the council has reported to us, for the constituents and for them to know who was in which district. So if you think about what it means to know where to campaign or where to vote or who to call when you have an issue that you want to bring, in a lot of these neighborhoods in the west part of District 4, the lines that it shared with District 9 were cleaned up. Now, again, all of them aren't like perfectly aligned with the neighborhood boundaries, but where we could, we tried to do it. But some of the places where we couldn't do it was due to the census blocks not perfectly lining up. Okay, so that takes us to District 5, which is right smack dab in the city, in the middle of the city. I've called this kind of the population expressway because it really does, it's the only district that touches all of the heavy growth areas of the city and the population loss areas of the city. And so, again, to make that shift, this was one of those places that had to change. And in addition to that, District 5 was overpopulated. So that actually required some significant changes, but the overall thrust of the district, which started out as east-west, you can see the black lines here, probably can't see all of the cursor movement here, but the black line here represents where District 5 used to be and essentially what we did was move District 5 farther to the east slightly. We kept the configuration so that District 5 was still on the west side of I-65, but in order to gain more population, to account for some of the population work that needed to be done in the west part of the city, District 5 moved slightly northward to take in part of Northeast Lake and this area near South Highlands. The other thing that occurred with District 5, of course, involved the cleaning up of neighborhoods to try to consolidate them as we could. So that actually meant shifting out of District 5, part of Forest Park that was formerly in District 5, but then also shifting into District 5, part of East Avondale. So that takes us to District 6. So District 6 was one of those that was underpopulated and had to gain population. And again, moving eastward was the answer. And part of that, because we're right in the middle of the city, was going to involve both District 3 and District 5. As we said earlier, that area of Glen Iris, which used to be in District 6, was consolidated and put into District 3 as the home district of the counselor there. And so District 6, in order to gain population, takes more of the area that it already had in Five Point South. You'll see the black line here represented where District 6 was. It expands a bit into more of Five Point South. And that really takes care of a lot of the population concerns there. But in addition, we consolidated neighborhoods. District 6 and District 7 share a significant border. A lot of this area was consolidated so that neighborhoods were clearly on one side or the other of the line. There are a couple of exceptions to the rule, but for the most part, there are many more clear lines where neighborhoods are moved clearly into District 6 or clearly into District 7. Moving on to District 7. Madam President is from District 7 in the southwest part of the city. It was actually pretty close to what was ideal in terms of district population at the start of the process. But as you learn in redistricting, every change in one part of the city involves a change in another. And partly due to this idea about trying to consolidate neighborhoods, a lot of this cleanup work of the lines between District 6 and District 7, and frankly, also between District 7 and District 8, meant that there were some shifting lines that consolidated a few neighborhoods here. One of the examples is West End. So District 7 actually, again, didn't have to change all that radically, but in pursuit of the consolidation of neighborhoods, there were some changes on the borders with District 6 and District 8. And that takes us to District 8. District 8 was one of the two that was, again, in need of more population. I've already spoken about the consolidation of neighborhoods here, but this is one of those areas where there was a significant pickup for District 8 population that used to be part of District 5. These areas here, I think it's Graymont and College Hills, were two of the neighborhoods that were taken, consolidated, and put into District 8. And finally, that takes us to District 9. Along with the same kind of neighborhood consolidation I talked about earlier, some of that cleanup work was done here on the borders of District 8 and District 9. But District 9, it's important to note, was the one district that needed the most population in the city, that had a significant, it was significantly below what the ideal population is. And so it had to gain population. And if you note, District 9 borders three districts. District 8, which was in need of population, District 4, which was in need of population, and District 5, which, as I said earlier, was overpopulated in the middle of the city. It was the one place where you had to pick up population. And the easiest place to do that, the most obvious place, both because of the position of the counselor, but also the configuration of the geography here, were these two neighborhoods in Drewitt Hills and Fountain Heights. The Fountain Heights neighborhood, you'll note, is divided, but we divided it here partly to preserve the presence of District 5 in this area, but we did it in a way that followed a well-known boundary, which was the I-20 corridor. So this was, we thought, an easy, sensible way of expanding District 9 where it's very close to very close to the existing footprint of the district, but also, overall, balancing out, again, the presence of this corridor where people were going to have to shift. We shifted as much as we needed to to balance populations, but we did it in a way that was easily understandable by the people who live in this area. So that's a lot of talking. I want to say two things, and then I'll just shut up now. But I'm open, of course, to explaining anything that was unclear. The first thing to say is, overall, in this map, our goal is to comply with law. One of the big, important laws, federal laws, that we have to deal with is the Voting Rights Act. You probably have heard a lot in the news about it. But essentially, the act assures that when we do adopt a policy like redistricting, we don't do it in a way that artificially concentrates or artificially disperses protected minority groups. And even though Birmingham is a majority-black city, African-Americans are considered a protected class under the Voting Rights Act. And so we did a check to make sure that we didn't overly concentrate or overly disperse voters of color. And frankly, the same is true for white voters. We basically preserved the existing balance or configuration of each one of these districts. So, again, I've practiced this in this area for over 20 years. I am confident that this complies with existing law. The other thing to say about this is the point I made earlier about the shifting of population. Some of it is inevitable in order to comply with one person, one vote, but we did it in a manner to try as much as we could to keep people where they voted initially. And we've said this in the earlier February 14 meeting with the council, but about 86% of the people in this city, under this draft map, are in the district that they started in. So about 14 or 15% had to move, but that was a relatively minimal, by comparison, of a lot of things. You could do a lot of things with this map, but there's a very low percentage of people who had to move. And if you had to move, you're moving as a whole neighborhood from one district to the other. So those are, I think, all of the things I really wanted to share just now. I appreciate your indulgence. I hope what I've said is clear, but I'm more than happy to explain if needed going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Creighton. We really appreciate the expertise and the work that Dr. Creighton and his team utilized to get us to where we are this evening with our draft map. So at this time, we want to hear from you as a part of this public hearing, where if you have any discussion or questions, again, you have three minutes. We have two mics on either side of the aisle. P I O staff, if you'll just help and assist any residents who would need to turn the mics on or we get those turned on. And if you can't come up to the mic, I know they'll be willing to help you, but if you all would just line up, as you have questions, if you would give us your name and your address, and then we would like to hear your comment. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Darlena Battle. My address, my real address? Okay. My address is 1225 16th Street North, Birmingham, 35204. I'm in Fountain Heights. So can you, can you blow up Fountain Heights? Because I just wanted to be sure that I understood it.
Of course.
And I appreciate you all taking the time to explain it to us, and I understand you all have to, you know, apply the laws and we have to go through that. So, but I'm only here to speak for Fountain Heights. We have, and my president is here somewhere, but we have been very intentional. The divide that you all have made is a divide that we've been trying to erase because the residents and the neighborhood, because the green part, I don't know what district that'll be now, but the green part is residential, like the houses. Once you come on the other side, that's more of the business and what people think is the downtown district or the civil rights district, but it's all one Fountain Heights. And we've been very intentional the last couple of years to trying to say, we are one community. This is going to probably hinder that some, and if we have to overcome it and we have to deal with it, we will, but if there can be any consideration to keep us all together or to at least, that's like the exact divide that we've been trying to erase. We have a great relationship with our councilperson, and we will build a great relationship with the new one. I don't, I don't know, what's green? What district is it? Nine? Who is nine? We would have a great relationship with you too, but we just want to, if possible, that's just been a point of contention in the neighborhood. And to understand, and that may be a different thing, like, what do we do when we want to get something done? Do we, if we have a resident that's on the gray part, you know, can we not talk to the councilperson that's on the green part? And that may be a different conversation, but as far as the line, that's just my concern with Fountain Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Tammy Smith. I stay at 1708 33rd Avenue North, 35207. And my question is this, what I would like to understand, and I didn't understand from him necessarily, what's the pros and the cons of the redistricting? What difference? I'm in District nine, so he said underpopulated, so stacked and packed. So I want to know the, what's the pros, how is it beneficial or the negative of that happening? What, I mean, because why is this so important and what is that? I think we need to know some things about what's really going on in it. Moving and the shift, and how's it beneficial for us? Is it going to be a benefit that you even did it, or could it just stayed the way it was? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Creighton, I believe you did explain, I don't know if you wanted to expound, on that sort of falls on some of our guidelines.
Sure, and I can just say briefly, so the law requires us, every 10 years when we get a new census, to make sure that every district has roughly equal population. And when you don't have it, what it can force is a situation where if you're in a heavily populated district, think about, think about a phone line. If you want to call your elected member, if you've got, you know, say, one and a half times the number of people or two times the number of people in one district and the other trying to call their elected, the group of people that have a crowded phone line are at a disadvantage. And that's sort of one piece of it. The other piece of it is just to make sure that when you have elections, that the vote that you cast is equal to every other person in the, in the city. And the law requires us to do what we can to make sure that they're roughly equal in population. So it's to make sure that, both in the sort of provision of services to your neighborhoods, but also your ability to knock on the door or send an email to or call your elected representative, that you're equally positioned to do that, just like everybody else. And we don't want that inequality. That's the real consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Creighton. Next, hello.
Hello, my name is Olivia Thompson, and I live at 824 11th Street Southwest. I was wondering, you know, we already have District seven and District six, we have West End, do have District seven in there and District six. So I was wondering, since District six moving all the way to the south, is any more of our district a part with District seven? Would get, since we going south, east, southeast, you know, up to the south side, are they pulling from more out of the west and going toward the south? You know, I'm just wondering, because we have Jermaine Park, and we have, well, West End, part of that is in District six and seven, Jermaine Park is in District seven, Oakwood Place is in District seven, so I'm in District six. So I was wondering, would you taking some of District six people out of Oakwood Place or whatever, or just go keep the same people in our district but just move south, since we lost popularity?
Dr. Creighton.
Sure. Well, what we tried to do is move so that neighborhoods as a whole were in one district or another. And part of that, at least you mentioned Oakwood Place. So Oakwood Place in this proposal appears to be largely in District seven, although the map here looks like part of the neighborhood still will be in District six. But it's along a street, one street, that if you know you're on one, you know, one side of this street, you know you're in District six or seven. So again, the goal was, to the extent that we had to move to deal with the law, we did it in a way that allows people to see pretty clearly and easily which side of the line that they're on.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, good evening to everyone. I'm David Russell. I live at 1625 Brookfield Lane. I have maybe four questions. Me, four questions, yes. The first question I have is that, when you're in terms of doing the district, for example, District nine, I think District nine got about 17 voting precincts. District one, two, got like four, five. So number one, when you are campaigning, you know, you have to have people at the voting place. As an economic standard, it's more economic to run in District nine. We take Norwood. Norwood have less than 200 folks, but yet it's still Norwood in District nine. Now, I know why this happened. I do know why this happened. Okay, that's number one. And the second thing is that we had all, I had already looked into a map, a map where you don't have to split the box. Okay, let's take two examples. Take Legion Field. I believe four city councils, I believe four city councils voted Legion Field. We take north, the Recreation Center, north Birmingham. I believe over there, you have, you know, you have four, four city councils running in one district. Now, personally, what I would like to see, you know, when you went back in the day when you ran, every council had their own box. And that's what I have a plan on working, so each council can have their own box. So therefore, the box won't be divided. I mean, I can go into a lot of detail why it's divided, but I'm not going to share the information, but what we like to see, what we like, what I would like to see, I would like to see one council have their own boxes. That's number one. The second thing, I know you stated earlier that the populations have declined, but there should be a way that we could have councilmember, not one councilmember, having 17 box voting plates, and another councilmember having four, five. Now, there is a way to do it now, because we're working on a plan ourselves. So we really appreciate if you take the time and look at those two things. First thing we talked about is that all of the councils vote in different boxes. That's number one. And the second thing that we talked about is that councilmen have at least not 19, 17 boxes, the other guy five boxes. You know, break it down so at least if one council can have 15 boxes, and the other one have 14 boxes, 15 boxes, 13 boxes. But it's just uncomfortable, because there is a cost involved when you have a lot of voting plates. So those are my two answers. Now, we are working on a plan ourselves to show that the council could have their own box. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I do just want to reiterate that the city council does not determine the voting box that is not within our review, but what we are doing is determining the districts, okay? But thank you, we know your concern. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Thank you, and good evening to everybody. Yes, I did want more specific information. My name is Pat Bell. My address, 4609 13th Avenue North. I'm in the fourth district, and I understand that we are underpopulated, so you're bringing in some of District one. I would like to have specifics. I want to know who are the new people coming in. And I also heard that you said that nine. I know that nine was a part of District four. Somehow, we were getting voting together with people of District nine. Are you saying that now that will be permanent? I just want more specifics. I'd like to know, when we are equal in all districts, what is the population that balances all of us?
Okay. Good questions, Ms. Bell. I don't think we ever went through the current, what the population ended up being as a result of the census, and we had a certain standard deviation that we had to use to try to right-size. So, Dr. Creighton.
Sure. So at the, you raised a couple of important questions. If I can, I would like to start with the question about where District four is sort of shifting. Because, so on the website, there is a chart. It'll look a little something like this, but I'm going to try to offer, at least to that question, kind of a sense of where people come from that are in that district. Again, so for District four, in the proposed draft, 96.7, I'm sorry, the original map had District four, as I said, underpopulated slightly. And the current map, it's 96.7%, so basically about three, sorry, yeah, 3.3% off of the ideal, perfect percentage. And it is, again, slightly under, but still within the range that the law allows. For District four, though, I thought I'd also offer where the people come from, which is, I think, the question that I think I heard. About 2,600 people in that district. The district as a whole has about 22,378 people. Again, this is stuff that's available on the site, but I just thought I'd bring it up to give a little bit of detail. 18,457 people of that 20, or 21,000 or 22,000 people, 18,000 of them are currently in District four. The two districts that take new people in, that contribute people to District four come from District one, about 2,600 people come into District four from District one, and about 492 people come into District four from District two. It turns out, as I talked about, the lines changed between four and nine, but actually only eight people shifted from District nine to District four, according to the census information. So very few people moved because of that, between nine and four, but the line shifted in order to consolidate numbers. And you'll note, I'm sure those of you who live in District four knows, know often that a lot of that area is not heavily populated. There are large tracts of lands where there is essentially industrial parcel. So some of that was moving area like that between District one and four and nine. But that's where, really, the population shifts occur, from districts, again, just to remind, Districts one and Districts two, District two move into District four in that iteration.
Thank you very much.
My name.
One second. Our members of the committee, she wanted to reiterate.
Okay.
Dr. Creighton, can you kind of point out a couple of the neighborhoods that were affected by this population change?
Overall or in a particular area?
Maybe like the underpopulated ones, maybe like D4, for example, D9, D8.
Sure. Well, if we're talking about neighborhoods that shifted with District four, so again, I'm going to just highlight this district, and what you'll see, the black lines represent where, under the 2010 plan, 2010, 2012, the black lines represent where District four used to be. So this area here, right around Collegeville and North Birmingham, the old lines used to take part of North Birmingham into District four, right? This proposal, though, the green represents where the proposed District four is, and so North Birmingham is consolidated, but shifted in whole to District nine. And Collegeville as a whole, obviously, is in District four. So this is one of those places where a neighborhood was divided, but because we consolidated so that everybody in the neighborhood knew which district they were in, that's sort of where we were able to kind of harmonize things. Happens in a few other places, but that's one clear example.
Thank you, Dr. Creighton. Ms. Palmer.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Susan Palmer. My address is 5317 Quincy Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, and I'm in the Central Park neighborhood. And I stand before you to ask, sir, a question. Is this map, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this map the same map as these two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my question is to you, and I ain't going to say you did a great job, because what I'm saying, we are residents. This map does us no justice because it doesn't show any addresses, no other kind of borderlines. Now, when I look at that map, I see, I live in District seven currently, but my neighborhood is divided into seven and eight. On this map, I see that all of Central Park neighborhood is now District eight. Okay, on this map, I see you got some lines, so those, you know, because where we live at, we were kind of zoned out to seven. Number one, I'm disappointed with the council, because if you're doing a proposal, why would you not notify the neighborhood's residents that are going to be highly effective to get them to come to this meeting so we can get an understanding of what is going on? The other thing is... The other thing is, I've been to district meetings, and this map does us no justice besides color code. Now, in my District Seven and Eight, I'm on, I gave you my address. Where can I go on the website, on your page, key in my address, and it tell me what proposed uh, district I'm gonna be in? That's the kind of technology we currently dealing with today. Why are we underserved when it comes to these maps, and to what's going on? And I'm not being disrespectful. I'm just being a citizen that now, I'm in Seven, but the map's telling me, if it's passed, I would be in District Eight. So how do I know that? How do the people know? That, and you, you already talked about population, but then you got to also put population in with crime, you got to put population in with schools, because where I live at in Seven, my school was in Eight. So you got schools being affected. And then I heard you say, you looked at where the elected officials of the school board lived and accommodated them. But why did you not accommodate the residents like the ladies getting up speaking, uh, about Fountain Heights? They wanted some accommodation. But how can you accommodate the school board and not accommodate the people? You got a meeting now, but y'all already did a proposal. So hopefully, uh, you know, President Pro Tem, y'all looking at to change, hopefully some things by here having this meeting today. So I'm speaking out, and it's not negative. I just represent. And I wanna know, because if I leave out of my neighborhood, I'm at the crossplex in Central Park, and we move out of there, my property value drops. So I'm all about, look, let us, let's, let's get with us. Let's satisfy some of us, not all of the elected officials, and give us what the people need and what we deserve when it comes to redistricting. Like you say, it's a law, and you got to do it, but it's also a law that you got to include us.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Appreciate you. Um... Yes, ma'am. What, um, I do want to allow Dr. Creighton to ask your series of questions, but what I do want to remind you all, as residents, this is the reason that we're here tonight, is to listen to you and have this public hearing, so that we can hear your comments and take them into consideration. The movement, when we talk about the uh, property values and things like that, we're not moving necessarily where comps would be used to determine what your property value. This is just putting you in a certain district based on the census. So I'm gonna let Dr. Creighton answer your questions.
Sure. I, I appreciate the, the comment, and I don't take anything as disrespectful at all. So, but I want to offer you, uh, so one of the things that we did, I'll acknowledge, all, the map configuration is the same as the one in the back. However, uh, we recognized that it was going to be more difficult just using something online, where the benefit of an online tool is that you can move things around. But of course, your question is exactly the one we thought about, that there would be people who would want to know where they live. And one of the things that we did was to present PDF large maps that are in every regional library, and the council agreed to do this, and it's been posted, I think for the last few weeks, where you could go and look in hard copy and see by street name, uh, exactly where you were. And so I really would encourage you, if, you know, if these maps don't work, and I recognize that they won't work for everybody, but they're available online if you'd like to, but if they don't work and you want to look at a hard copy and put your hand right on the area where you live, they're available in every regional um, library in the city, and I think also in the City Council chamber. So I definitely would encourage that. I think in addition to the question about, you know, council members, what I want to offer is, uh, we, that policy consideration was actually as much about having the voters' choices about who these council members would be and who the Board of Education members would be. We wanted to honor and respect those choices that they were expressed in August of 2021. So what we didn't want to do was move large numbers of people who said, look, I voted for Councilor A, and all of a sudden, we all are now shifted to another council district. We tried to limit that where we could, but that wasn't just about preserving the individuals who were elected. I think you should, I'd like you to think about what it means as a voter, if you go out and you choose a person. We wanted to make sure that as much as we could, that we made sure that people who chose a council member, who chose a board member, have that same person. We couldn't do it everywhere, but where we could, again, only about thirteen percent of the entire city had to move, but that's a pretty small number compared to the eighty-five percent who were, who stayed where they had to be. And so we're trying to balance a lot of considerations. We will, I will readily acknowledge, this is probably gonna fall more where certain people are gonna be more happy about this than others. But we tried to do it in a way that was, one, transparent, and, two, as much as we could to treat people equally, because that's something I take seriously. But I appreciate the comment, and I'm happy to talk to you afterwards if there are more questions about where you live.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Sir, I believe you were in line.
Okay. I'm Paul Godby. I live at eight twenty-one, Twenty-third Street South. And my concern is with the border between uh, District Three and District Six, particularly in the Five Points South area, because all of a sudden, uh, a lot of the uh, people that lived there were concerned, because this is now moving out of District Three to District Six, and there's a lot of community involvement, a lot of infrastructure things that's been discussed. And it also cuts uh, District Three in half, virtually, here. So we're not too happy with that particular uh, borderline right there. It seems to be like non-compact to us. So uh, that's, that was my major concern on bringing this here tonight, but it also reflects with a lot of the, the residents in the area, because now all of a sudden, they'll be shifted um, over here to District Six, when they have a lot of concerns with things happening right across the street for where they live.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Alvin Washington. I live in District Six. I live at fifteen thirteen McCarran Street Southwest, and I just had a couple of, of for clarity, uh, when we, uh, when you, when you were saying overpopulated and underpopulated districts, and you taking the census, and you are taking the census, are you counting voting people over eighteen in that census? Are you counting the whole household? So the number of voters in a district, you know, determines also, so we, I, I just wanted to get some clarity on what you're counting when you say over and underpopulated, and you're moving people. And I think I had the same question as this last gentleman, uh, about District Six and District Three. From what I can understand, it was overpopulated, but you left, did you leak? Well, evidently, you did, and I didn't hear you. But could you show me District Six once more?
It's right here, in the, in the orange.
In the orange? Okay.
Right here in the center.
Is that, is that-
Sandy-looking color, right there.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. It's got the, you see, South Tittisville, North Tittisville, that's right in the center. Let me zoom a little bit more, if that helps.
See back there in the back. DeDroy, do you have a pointer?
I don't have a pointer, unfortunately. I'm sorry.
Okay.
If you can see my, I don't know if you can see the cursor. Here, why don't I just go to the board?
Thank you, Dr. Creighton.
Yes? So this is the border of District Six.
Okay, and that's including some of District Three?
Well, yes, that's right. The pink part is where District Three is, the orange part, this darker area is where District Six is. That's into the proposal.
Okay. The question about the census?
So-
And what you're counting?
Absolutely. It, it, a fair, important question. So the census reports both numbers, the total population and the voting age population. For equal population purposes, we count all the people. So regardless of whether you're eighteen or above, um, you're counted. So they count kids and anybody, even if they're not eligible to vote. So um, the question as to whether it, and I, we, in the business, talk about it as over and underpopulated, just, no, I use that as a shorthand to say, it's um, a place that has to gain more population, or a place that needs to uh, shift population out. But that is a measure based on the total population as the census counts um, in a particular area.
Do you all don't consider the persons uh, that's eligible to vote? You just count the whole census?
For equal population purposes, yes, you count everybody. However, for Voting Rights Act considerations, as I said earlier, we have to make sure that everyone, regardless of race, has an equally, equal opportunity to elect candidates of choice. That's the language from the statute. With that concern, the Voting Rights Act requires us to pay attention to uh, voting age population, but that's a different consideration than just questioning whether or not every popu- every district has roughly the same population. We're talking everybody, regardless of whether you're eligible.
But you would not weaken one area to strengthen another?
I'm, I'm not sure. Could, could you tell me what you mean?
Well, I was actually talking about the people that are over eighteen that's eligible to vote, and you wouldn't move those persons out of that particular district to strengthen or weaken more?
So um, it's not something we did here, and I wouldn't recommend it for a number of reasons, but usually when you're moving people, you're moving people based on where they live. So I'm, I would not recommend, and it wouldn't, it would raise a lot of legal questions if you're targeting people based on age and only moving those people from one district to another. So it, you're right, when you move a total population, what we don't know, and you know, we have measures that tell us what the voting age population will be, and that's, that will sometimes differ based on demographic shift. Some, you know, racial groups are younger on average, and those, and others are older. But with this assessment, I've given you a statement about total population being the basis for determining um, equally populated districts. If you're interested in the voting age population, we definitely have those statistics available. They're posted on the website, and I'm happy to talk to you about them afterwards.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the City Council and distinguished consultant. My name is Sheila Chaffin. I live at two zero two eight Highland Avenue South, Birmingham. That is District Three, and I'm here because the proposal will be for where I personally live and surrounding areas to go to District Six. The consultant mentioned that thirteen to fifteen percent, or some figure like that. There was some changing around, it does affect directly, and how to handle that, as I understand it, is the essence of this hearing, versus the other eighty-five percent that unfortunately I'm not involved, and evidently seems to be okay, I guess, is what we have going on. There's two points I've been observing, and I've studied the maps. This is not a personality issue, please understand, between um, city councillors, we have two distinguished honorable people here, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate that anytime you have a census, you often run through these kinds of hearings. It, all of my forty-five years of urban planning work, it always went on, so I know that, too. I accept that as part of the democracy. But we have two problems. First uh, problem is, this body is being asked to approve alignments where the people, like myself and others, would not have voted for the representative that they will be going under. Not that there's anything wrong with the proposed new representative, but that is a fact, if I understand, as that affects me and others, and I'm the president of the Five Point South Neighborhood Association. So I would think, I'm not trying to be threatening, but an, my observation would be, someone is going to come out- And I'm, was hoping there would be a city council opinion- -office that says this is all okay. I have not seen that. I've tried to get ahold of that, since typically one would do that first. So that's my first question to the body. Did someone find it legally okay, at the risk of being sued if it's not, to do this? Okay. The second point, though, here's, here's my specific proposal, separate from, that's the larger issue. The specific proposal is, um, I'm okay on the District Threes that go to District Six, with one exception. It has to do with the Five Point South uh, neighborhood historic area. It is a National Historic Registered District. It also is subject to what's gonna be a bid, a business, I can't think of the word. A bid is a business industrial district. Did I say that right? Yep. Help me here. Anyway, we, we've been working on it for two years, so-
Business Improvement District.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm getting nervous, you see. I can't come up with my vocabulary. Anyway, we're working towards a bid, and if the bid is successful, as you know, that generates cash in the way of taxation, those in that area does not cause taxation elsewhere, but those would benefit of my, my property, for example, I would pay higher taxes, twice over what I now pay. It's been studied and figures proposed. The point of that testimony is, there's a growing enthusiasm for the future bid under current leadership. If you change leadership when you have a hot proposal coming up politically, generally that's a bad idea. It just is, if you think about how the world works. So that's the first point. The second, we've had a major historic building called Quinlan Castle at Southern Research Institute, SRI, you may know that name. Okay, that's gone down, despite efforts that could have been uh, done a certain way. We tried it, it didn't go, and we have several other demolitions occurring now of some National Historic Registered Buildings within that district. So the thesis I'm advancing is, when your horses are lined up, ready to go to the finish, your horse is steady when you've got a couple heavy political things. The particular territory I'm describing, I'll be happy to give, be more specific. It hardly has any residents, it's a neutral change area. It didn't get more residents, it didn't get some migrating outward. The same buildings still there, yielding the same number of dwelling units, and it's part of this thirteen, fifteen percent thing. And that's the part I think should stay, because it's a neutral. It's not the entire Five Points neighborhood where I'm the president, it's not that, that's the larger area. This would be south of UAB, from, their territory kind of ends roughly at Twentieth, where Twentieth Street crosses University Boulevard.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but you have passed your minutes, so-
I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, um, I know you did have two questions that I would like to go ahead and be sure that we answer. I do want you to know that, of course, we, we created guidelines that we want to follow the law. Our goal is definitely not to have um, any type of legal action taken as a result of this district map. And so that's why, again, we're including your comments as well as ours, but there are guidelines that we must follow and follow the law. There, it's very strict in giving us those guidelines. I'd also like you to know that the Office of the City Attorney, uh, as a legal body, was also uh, a part of the review of these guidelines, to be sure that what we set forth was according to the law, and um, so that there was that oversight. Dr. Creighton, I'm not sure if there were any other questions that you needed to answer?
Just briefly, um, and I don't know if it was, I, I said so, I should have. I'm actually a lawyer and a political scientist, so I have done this work for a considerable period of time of my life. This is what, there are not many people who know as much or more than I do about this. But I would just offer you that, you know, in consultation with the city attorney, I think that's, you know, the read on this is correct with respect to the elections. Just always remember that when you're thinking about one person, one vote claims, if you don't do this sort of work, the lawsuit that comes is one that is pretty easy to win, which is, you didn't do what the law requires you to do. And so that's one of the reasons we are trying to do this in compliance as much as we can, both with the law and with the guidelines. Second thing to mention, I said earlier, in, in the conversation about Roebuck in District One, it is one of the two very large neighborhoods in the city that can't move in whole without doing a lot of disruption. The other is Five Points. So Five Points South is a huge neighborhood that actually, under the current map, uh, three districts share. We're reconfiguring the share that each one of those districts has of Five Points. But, you know, I'm suggesting all of these choices are, you know, not easy to make, but one of the things we always have to consider is the population, and so to the extent that we can do it in a way that balances the considerations that each of the uh, districts have in sort of having a piece of Five Points, but also making sure that as we're uh, thinking about equal populations, that we're not getting ourselves in a um, position where one district is significantly over or underpopulated relative to others. That's really kind of how, at least this configuration, tries to resolve it.
Because we do have several other residents that are, haven't had their time, and so if you could go to the City Council website, there is an email available, and we can take your further comments into consideration. Thank you so much.
Just to be clear, it was the historic district and bid area that I'm referring to? Okay, the neutral area relative to census. Just make sure, I didn't do whole Five Points neighborhood in my comments, just because that could be misunderstood.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Sir?
Michael Brawne, next, North Tittisville. I got two questions for you, sir. First question, uh, when will this take effect?
Sure. The ordinance that's contemplated has this map taking immediate effect upon adoption?
Why now, when we already in election time right now, when we already in election, other election that will affect them now? I mean, why now?
Right.
I mean, we got the share, and we got the list of other states in Senate and Congress that we got to vote on. Why y'all couldn't wait to after this?
I would just answer for Dr. Creighton on this. We are only redistricting for the city of Birmingham.
I understand it with all the borderline thing, though.
No, sir. Just let me finish. We are redistricting for city council, Board of Education. So the sheriffs, the elections, the judicial judge elections, those are not affected by this map. The maps are state, county, city. And we, the timeline for this particular process was also, we had to follow the law is when we received the results of the census. And so the clock started ticking upon the time that we received the information. And we have certain time intervals, and that's why we are here today, is to meet those intervals. So your current voting that is taking place, that is not at all affected by what we'll be doing. What we're doing here today will affect any special elections that we will have or end the 2025 next election. Thank you. Right, yes, ma'am. Hello?
Hello, Madam President. Madam President, Pro-Tam, distinguished councilors, board members, residents. My name is Earlene Prince, and I'm in District Five, College Hills. I want to piggyback on the gentleman who just left. My first question, and Dr. Creighton, I'm sorry. My first question is, who mandated, or is it a mandate, that this go into effect immediately as opposed to the next election for city council members? As people have previously stated, those of us who will be facing redistricting, and I think if we use the word redistricting more than we use the word move, so people won't get it confused, because we are not moving, at least I'm not. Okay? We're not moving. The district lines are moving. So your house will stay in the same area that it was initially in, just to make that perfectly clear, right? Okay, we're on the same page. So I would not say you will be moving, because you are not moving. Your district is. The line is, okay? So why is it that we cannot wait until the next municipal election as opposed to doing it in a special election? Does the law preclude that? And so, well, if they would answer for me, then I'd appreciate it. The second thing, the second thing, just two. The second is, since these maps will be in libraries, right? Those of us who do not have internet access at home should make it a point to go to the library and use the computers there to submit your comments, whether they be pro or against. We should do that, and we should urge all other of our neighbors to do the same for those of us who don't have internet access, so that there won't be an excuse. But I'd like to know that, and I'm done. And it's so good to see you guys.
Great to see you again. Ms. Earlene actually worked with us as one of the council assistants, so we're so happy to see her. She's retired, but not yet retired, so thank you very much.
You see, I'm hoarse. I can't retire.
I will let Dr. Creighton talk about the requirements under law of what we're doing. And but I do, before, if you want to take, you see, that's okay. But I just wanted to answer, and thank you for reiterating, that we have made these maps available. And I just want to let you know, the maps are available at City Hall, right outside the city council chambers. They're in the central library, and then we've located them in the four regional libraries. And that's Five Points West, Springville Road, Avondale, and North Birmingham. So we really wanted to make these maps available to you. So if you're like me and need to touch it and put your finger on it, then that's exactly what we wanted to do. And so I'd like Dr. Creighton to answer the more detailed requirement. Thank you.
Sure. So one of the challenges, again, that we're finding ourselves in, and it's due to the fault of no one in this room, is we didn't have a census that was completed in a timely manner as it normally is. Because Birmingham has its elections in the year ending in '01, or in this case, 2021, having a late-arriving census made, right, this election a challenge. And there were tough choices. The choice was either not have an election, which would make a number of people upset, or having an election under the old maps. The question about whether the map should take effect, you know, I couldn't advise anybody to hold off on having a map once you've drawn it to not take effect. Because again, this isn't just a question of how the election works, it's how governance works, right? Calling up your member to ask them to do a thing for you is as much about the power you have as a citizen as going to the ballot box and casting a ballot. Again, on the one hand, we want to honor this policy, I think, and the city council agrees. There's an important emphasis put on honoring the choices that were made in 2021. Let me tell you, I've done a lot of redistricting in my life, and it can get cutthroat at times. This is not that. And I say that because the policy choice that was made was to say, we're going to preserve as much as we can of the choices that were made in 2021. But we can't do it and ignore the law, which requires us, and I appreciate the point. Again, sometimes in the jargon, we kind of miss the point, and I want to make sure that we're speaking clearly. We have to have our lines respecting population changes so that those new districts are equal in population. And so the lines do have to shift. And unfortunately, it means that, yes, in some cases, people who voted for a counselor will be represented in a new map, no matter what map you draw, by a new or a different counselor. You didn't move the line, did? That's a perfectly fair and reasonable way to think about it. But the goal in all of this is to do it in a way that enhances, rather than subtracts from what's reasonable and makes sense to you all as voters. You want to know who represents you. You want to know who you have to get together with if you want to yell at or congratulate your elected member. And so the goal of consolidating neighborhoods where we could was to help make sure that even when those shifts had to occur in the lines, we did it in a way that groups of people who commonly do things together, to the extent that we can, are still held together. So that's really the intention. You mentioned something about a special election. I will tell you, you're not the only jurisdiction that had this kind of challenge to have an election in the '01 year and then have to do redistricting afterwards. Again, one consideration, I think this policy reflects it, is even if the lines have to shift, allowing for there to be some time that those maps are in place gives you and your counselor some time to get to know each other before the next election. I will tell you, if you waited until just before the next election to redistrict, it could get messy. It could make a lot more confusing choices about who your new member is if you've got to make a choice between them and somebody else. This is an approach that allows you all time to kind of reestablish those relationships. And I will say the last thing, and I'll sit down. You know, we talked about 2025. That's the next regularly scheduled election. But vacancies happen. And when you have vacancies, you can't time when that happens. And so the new map allows you to be in place. And basically, we have the gentleman earlier who talked about boxes. There are choices that have to be made on the administrative side, so that elections run smoothly, to reflect the administrative stuff that has to happen to make sure that you cast your ballot in the right place, once these maps are drawn. So doing this immediately gives time for the administrative piece of this to take effect so that when the election happens, no matter when it happens, whether it's a special or the regularly scheduled election, you've got everybody doing what they're supposed to do, and so that you know where you show up to vote and who you're voting on.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Creighton. Counselor Pro-Tam is just going to also just clarify one of the questions that was asked.
Yes, so if you look at Section 2-2-62, reapportionment of districts, this is the code that makes it set effective immediately. So as Dr. Creighton has said, technically, you won't be effective until you have to vote until 2025, if that makes sense. Y'all get it? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Pro-Tam. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Ken Wale. I live on the 1800th Princeton Avenue Southwest. And so we're redistricting, redistricting from six to seven.
Go ahead, sir.
We're moving from six to seven. I'm a creative and a critical thinker, so I'll do my best not to make this confusing. But I have two questions in terms of the response timeline, so to speak. And I know it's a great timeline. So in response to the feedback, some of the amount that couldn't be answered here, and that may be submitted later, what can you guys say to give us an idea in terms of what timeline you can expect a response to that feedback from this meeting? And then also in terms of that small percentage, which in the grand scheme, I do commend. Of course, you're supposed to do a good job, but I do commend the work. It is a small percentage in the grand scheme. And what timeline can we expect, or should we expect for that percentage of people who changed? Who the person they voted for may have changed? Can we expect any sort of raising awareness or a timeline for that? For those people who did, unfortunately, or fortunately, really not unfortunately, because you move from one good person to another good person. But what timeline can we expect a raising awareness for that change?
Very good questions, and I thank you. Appreciate you. What is the neighborhood that you live in now? You said you're going from six to seven?
It's West End on Princeton Avenue Southwest, 18. I get the name of the actual neighborhood?
Actually, you got opposite. I took all the West End.
West End, ma'am?
Yeah, so I represent now, that goes to Olivia's question. I represent all the West End, so I already had part of West End, but now just represent everybody, yeah. The only thing that changed really with District Six was District Eight that needed more population got Graymont in my little part of Smithfield.
I'm sorry. I guess I didn't know my neighborhood. I was actually Oakwood. I thought it was West End, but it's technically Oakwood neighborhood and not.
Oh, Oakwood place didn't change either.
Well, thank you for that, then.
Yeah.
Thank you, but just to answer his question as far as notification and that type of thing. And we do have just two more speakers here, because we're approaching the end of the, towards the seven o'clock hour. So I don't want to take up your time, but I will say that if there are other comments, they will, you can make them on the email, if you go to the email site on the city council page. As of tonight, I don't believe we had any comments that we had received. So we should be able to get that information back to you fairly quickly, okay? And for those that you, again, I just want to remind everyone, this is the draft. And this is why we are listening to you this evening. This is not the final map. This is a draft. And it will come back and be considered with comments. And then we will be brought back forth to the council, and we will vote on the map when we vote on the particular ordinance that outlines the reapportionment. So I just want to let you know, that's why we're going through this process this evening. And we do have our last two speakers. So I'm going to let the lady go first, if you don't mind.
Hi, my name is Frances Wallace. I'm in District Five. My question is less about the map itself as compared to the representation. So we are in a city that 22% of the households don't have internet access, and our libraries are currently being defunded. So I want to ask exactly how we ensure that all the people who do not have the privilege to have the internet access to see that the public hearing was only posted 10 hours ago to let us know that we were going to have that? I want to know exactly how we're making sure that all 99 neighborhoods are being represented.
We did announce that when we first started. One of our first actions was to set the date of the public hearing. So that was done in a city council meeting, I believe, back in February. And we've been announcing that over and over and making that available to the public. Now, I realize that, and we understand, with the problems that we have with some of our insecurities, as it is for technology, broadband, we don't have Wi-Fi. So that's why we placed the maps in the various locations that I mentioned already, the city council chambers and each of those libraries. And we took into effect that everyone does not have the internet. And that's why we wanted to make those maps available to you physically. Thank you.
How do we ensure that we get the information that it's in the libraries and whatnot to the people who don't have internet access or maybe may not have transportation to make it to city council meetings?
So let me say this. This is where neighbors helping neighbors comes in. Do you go to your neighborhood meetings?
I do.
You do? Well, more likely your counselor is supposed to tell the neighborhood officers. I know I made it personally, whether it was at the neighborhood meeting or I called them. I made sure my neighborhood officers knew about it, so they can tell. Now, what we can do is, we do have to reimagine how the city has to communicate, but any suggestions you have will take into consideration. But we did say at council meeting, we did tell our neighborhood officers. We made sure that people knew about it by word of mouth. And we put it on the radio. I forgot, we put it on the radio. So we use different avenues for that. And as far as the libraries, we're looking at different ways to help fund them.
All right. May I ask what date that city council meeting was that you proposed the date for this hearing?
It was that February 22nd.
All right. And was that posted on your forms of social media?
That was, yes, ma'am, and it's also, you can go back and you can look at that, review that city council meeting through our Facebook page.
I guess, I mean, not just the actual city council meeting, but for example, you posted the flyer 10 hours ago. Was that, when was that from?
The flyer has been out more than 10 hours ago. The flyer has been out. Our PIO team created that flyer, and we've distributed it in various methods. And I think ad nauseum, you all got two phone calls from me and the text. So we tried to reach everyone, but I thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Um, could you probably ensure that, you know, your other counselors are sure to do the same that you did in forms of phone calls and whatnot, and making sure that it gets to everybody that it can, so that we can make sure that everybody is able to be present?
It was a citywide rubble call, so it went to everyone within the city.
All right, that's good to hear.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you. Really wanted to be sure that we communicate, so thank you. All right, our last speaker. Thank you, sir.
My name is William R. Mohammed. I live at 411 Lorang Street. That's in the Ninth District. And I just wanted to say, please do all you can to get information out. I would like to encourage you all to act like it's a campaign and do the same things that's done in the campaign. But I personally don't know enough about this to ask a question or to speak about it. And so, and I'm supposed to be active civically and politically. So I know that most of our people don't know, so do all you can. What I wanted to do, I've been planning for two or three months now to come before the city council, and I haven't had, haven't taken the opportunity. I just wanted to talk about the census. This census is not only late, doctor, this census is skewed. This census, there's a lot of information out there. This past census, which took place in a pandemic and which was cut off short by the former administration, affects our community like no census in history. I just want y'all to take that in mind. And I want to encourage the council to be a part of challenging this census, because I've been saying everywhere I've been across the state that Huntsville is not the largest city. You give me the number that they say Huntsville is larger than Birmingham, and I tell you, it was that many people in the Eastland that didn't get counted. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. You'll be the last speaker, sir. Do you need the mic? I don't think we can hear you.
My name is Johnny Wright, and I'm a Druid Hill neighborhood. Now, we have a small portion of the people in our neighborhood as well. But if I'm wrong, I wish somebody to correct me. Now, this state election that's coming up in May, the jurors ruled that they can use that old program that they had for the election. And then after the vote, then they'll go back into the census that they had, the making up, making up the, if I make it, is clear. So if somebody can correct me, but see, y'all want to rush into this thing. And I think it's your weight until the next. And I think it's your weight until the next election before you can reelect your councilperson again. And this makes sure that, it's look to me that y'all just throwing our votes away.
Yes, sir, so it, it's-
But they said in the state, the, uh, the judge made a ruling that they was gonna have, go ahead on and have this election without, uh, uh, following that, uh, mandate that they had.
Yes, sir, that's actually the state where my father was a plaintiff, so, uh, thank you for that. Um, so that's by law where we have to do this or we're going to be in violation of the law. So if you, but that state, so it's different, it's different ways for state, county, and district. If you take the county map, take the state map, this- We're not rushing it, sir, we have a deadline. It's not, we'll let Dr. Creighton, who is a lawyer, uh, talk about the law.
Well, and I'm glad, uh, again, Counselor Smithman rightly, uh, pointed out that the state fight over which map was gonna apply was actually a fight over which new map was gonna apply. Uh, the, the legislature adopted a map, there was a question as to whether it was legal and whether or not the state newly adopted map would take effect. The whole fight was over whether that was going to be the map to be used in 22 or not. The only choices were the state's new map or the plaintiffs challenging the state's new map. So again, in all cases, a new district map would need to be drawn. The same is true here. The law requires it, and as, as I said earlier, it means that there's going to be change. I know change is not easy, but in this case, uh, the council is actually taking, I think, actually a rightly thoughtful approach to do this um, in terms of the timing. And the question I think that this, you know, forum is really focused on is figuring out if there need to be changes in this draft. But in all cases, a new map has to be drawn because otherwise the concern about the legal sanction that might follow if the old maps of 2010 are still in place for 2022 up to 2025, that's not a fight you want to get in, 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 in a court. You have to draw a new map. The question is just sort of how to balance all the considerations that law and the guidelines sort of present to you.
Thank you, Dr. Creighton. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my name is Tiffany Weston. I'm at 200 West Wood Drive. Uh, my, I have a couple of questions. My question is, uh, concerning, uh, portions of District One going into District Four. Uh, you said, I think you said about 2,600 households are going in from one to four. And I want to know, why was it more of, uh, five taken to go into four than that many households out of one into four? A- and then, um, my second question is about, um, I think a guy spoke, maybe spoke, spoke about this earlier. Uh, because I know the county did some redistricting also. And, uh, what if any of the, uh, county redistricting did you take into, uh, thought or effect? Because, uh, what, how, I, I guess what I want to know is how does that, the county redistricting affect what's going on with the city redistricting? And was any of that taken into thought when redistricting the city district, districts? And then I have a comment, and then my, uh, my comment is, uh, uh, since four and nine, uh, for instance, are the, uh, two of the underpopulated areas, then why isn't there, uh, more, uh, building of, uh, homes or whatever in these underpopulated districts to, for them to gain population? Because it's, and I'm just putting on my thinking cap. Most of the new construction of homes and condominiums and stuff being built is being built in overpopulated districts such as five and, uh, three. Uh, I think, yeah, five and three. So it, the situation is going to continue to be the same. You're gonna have the, uh, districts that are continuing to be underpopulated. And then you're gonna have to continue to take away from overpopulated districts. So what, what is the plan to get these underpopulated districts populated, you know? So that's-
Thank you, ma'am. And you, you made some very good points. I'm gonna let Dr. Creighton, uh, answer the last question first as far as, um, the underpopulation and the numbers as far as it is for the map.
Sure. So one of the things we try to take into account in trying to balance populations is that very issue. We want to, as much as we can, prevent there from having to be a huge shift, um, you know, over the next 10 years. Um, if the same trend that we inherited this year happens in 2030. Of course, you rightly pointed out, we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, a lot of things could happen, um, in terms of where things happen in the city that, um, you know, it sparks a lot of growth and stuff that may involve people shifting away. And the city may annex people. I'm not saying that it will happen, I'm just saying a lot of things you just really, we can't know what's going to happen. But the main key to, to point out here is, one, uh, you mentioned District Nine. One of the ways in which District Nine has grown is in an area that I think by all expectation, there's going to be some growth. And so what we hope, what we expect is, we're going to be likely better situated going forward after 2030 to see some growth in the area. Now, I can't get into the policy questions about what the city council will choose to do, that's beyond my pay grade. But to say overall, um, I think the question also went to whether the growth in, um, District Four came from District One or District Five. The, one of the reasons that District One was the obvious place to look, and this is taking all things into account, was because the movement in District Five, District Five had to take a lot of its neighborhoods that were in the old map to, uh, support the population in Districts Nine and District Eight. So, you know, you have to at some point balance out, um, where that contribution of, uh, lines or population goes to areas where there hasn't been that movement. And as I said, District One was also a place where there was a significant, um, heightened population compared to the average. And so that was an obvious place because they shared a border. And this was a place where it made a lot of sense because I think in the conversations of, of the counselors, these were areas where there was a shift that would make sense in consolidating neighborhoods and the like.
Thank you very much. Um, I do want to just thank everyone. Your feedback has been very important to us. Uh, we respect everyone's comments. Uh, again, if you have additional feedback that you'd like to provide us, please go to the website and you can email, we have an email address that we can give you. And we would be very happy to receive those comments. That's B C C Census. I'm gonna let Counselor, she's got younger eyes.
So it's B C C, there's two Cs, Census 2022@BirminghamAL.gov. Y'all got it? B C C Census 2022@BirminghamAL.gov. And we'll make sure to post this on social media and stuff.
And we will, did we get the email address incorrect? 2020. 2020. Yes. I'm sorry. This is our public hearing. We will meet again with the council where we have to consider the, um, ordinance that will, uh, where we will vote on the map and what we'll be considering among us as counselors. We want, we'll probably defer that and our ass counselors will decide. We could give three weeks so that we could be sure to get all of your comments, okay? And, um, so we'll be sure to announce what, at that time, what that meeting would be, but that would be three weeks from now. What is that date, Counselor? April 19th, okay? Thank you all so much. We do appreciate your, just your enthusiasm, your attention, uh, to the maps. And we thank you for your presence this evening. Thank you so much.